All right, ready? Let's do this. I'd like to call the beamed orders. Here we are, it is 7:06 on Wednesday, August 20th. Here we are at the monthly meeting of the Tivoli Board of Trustees. So please, if everyone will rise. Please, Cleveland. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the rich, deep, and just as for all. Thank you very much. Clerk Cleveland, may we have your report?
Okay, so the report for the August 20th meeting. The village sold 515 trash tags since the July meeting, so people were kind of wasteful this month. Treasurer Bonnie Day processed two payrolls. I assisted the meeting of the zoning board of appeals on Monday, August 4th. And then Bonnie Day, the planning and zoning secretary, assisted the planning board meeting on Monday, August 11th.
Thank you very much, Rebecca. We have minutes from our previous meeting, which I believe everyone's had time to read. Can I get a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, Peter?
Aye.
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 Excellent. Motion approved. Okay, the minutes from July 16th are approved. Next, we're onto the treasurer's report. This month, compared to last month, we got off pretty easy. The total of the bills to be paid is $55,868.84. Thank you to our treasurer for providing this. Can I get a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
So moved.
Second. It is moved by Valdino, seconded by the deputy mayor. Let's get a roll call. Peter?
Aye.
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 And I also vote aye. Can I get a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Can I get a motion?
Second.
Seconded by Valdino. Roll call?
Aye.
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 And I also vote aye.
Me too. All right, and our fiscal responsibility is taken care of there. Let's move on. Can we have a zoning report?
Building permits reviewed, seven. Building permits issued, five. Complaints, one. Complaints investigated, one. Zero zoning property maintenance violations. Zero appearance tickets. Municipal searches, two. Eight inspections. And that's it.
Perfect. We have a lot of things on the agenda tonight. So just as a preview, we have resolutions regarding the setting a standard workday for elected and appointed officials and employees. We also have a resolution authorizing attendance at schools and conferences. We need to talk about awarding an IT services contract and executing agreement for said services. We'll be authorizing the execution of the LoSAP plan documents. Also authorizing an execution of the agreement between the village of Tivoli and the Red Cross. Allowing them to keep a car in our municipal lot. And also an agreement, or license agreement between the village of Tivoli and the DCWWA for work on the pump station on Broadway. And we'll be accepting our annual financial report. So that's a lot. And since we have one member of the board here, it's a lot of responsibility on you, Karen. Do you have any comment on agenda items only?
Go for it.
So, moving on to regular business. We need to set the standard workday for elected and appointed officials, which is sort of a procedural thing for the New York State retirement system. What was it, Nissler?
What's the L?
Um, hang on, I'll tell you. That is the New York State and local retirement system. So when you work for a municipality, you can sign up to be in the state retirement system, which is a pretty great thing. So the resolution says, "Be it resolved that the village of Tivoli hereby establishes the following standard workdays for these titles, and will report the officials to the New York State and local retirement based on their record of activities." So the standard workday for the mayor is seven hours. The standard workday for trustees is seven hours. The standard workday for the village justice is six hours. For the clerk is seven hours. And for the treasurer/deputy clerk, it is seven hours. So can I get a motion to accept this resolution?
So moved.
Second. Moved by a vote, second by Manjerry. Can I get a roll call?
Aye.
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 Aye. I also vote aye. So we also need to do the same thing for employees. And we have a camp counselor who is a forward-looking young person who is getting involved with the New York State and local retirement system. So "Be it resolved that the village of Tivoli hereby establishes the following as a standard workday for its employees, and will report days worked to the New York State and local employees' retirement system based on the timekeeping system or the record of activities maintained and submitted by these members to the clerk of this body." So the job title, recreation camp counselors, the standard workday is seven hours. Can I get a motion to approve this resolution? Or to pass this resolution?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Valdino, seconded by a vote. Can I get a roll call?
Aye.
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 I also vote aye.
I was just gonna say, just in case, probably no one is ever gonna look at this or wonder. But just for anybody at home who ever watches this and wonders. I probably wondered this one time, way back when I first encountered this idea. Just so people know. So people like the clerk and the treasurer who work way more hours than, like, say, a trustee does. There's like a whole chart. So like, the standard workday is the same, but like, the pay frequency is different. And so there's like a chart, and then the retirement system does all the math. And so you get vested at a different rate. And so it's like a, there's like a whole thing. So like, this counselor may go into the system now, but like, may not be vested for years. But like, maybe this person will get a state job at some point, or a local municipal job. And it does, it does like benefit you to get into the system, because at some point, like, when I was in the town board, I, like, I still haven't worked the amount of hours to ever get. I have a benefit in the system, but I will never get it.
Right.
Unless I serve way more years, right? But who knows?
You're a young woman yet, you could, you could get there.
Anyway.
Yeah.
It's a great little system.
No, it's cool. And also, the charts will be posted here. So if you're interested, you can come and see.
They're tax dollars that work.
Exactly. So our next resolution is to authorize attendance at schools and conferences. Peter, is this you?
I will read that.
Excellent.
So, "Resolution, authorizing attendance at schools and conferences. Whereas pursuant to Chapter 24, Article 5 of general municipal law, by resolution, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Tivoli may authorize any of its employees and officers who hold public office to attend a conference, and whereas there is to be held during the month of September, NICOMS Fall Training School, as well as following county association meetings for the remainder of the official year, Dutchess County Supervisors and Mayors Association, Dutchess County Planning Association. Now therefore, be it resolved, Section 1 of the following: Officers and employees are authorized to attend following schools' meetings subject to the Board's permission, budget availability, with preference to those who may have not previously attended. Mayor, Dutchess County Supervisors and Mayors Association, clerk and treasurer, NICOMS Fall Training School, members of the planning board and zoning board of appeals, and planning and zoning secretary, Dutchess County Planning Association. Section 2, that this resolution is effective immediately."
This is great.
Nice.
And thank you to Clerk Cleveland for having found this and gotten it on the agenda just in time. So can I get a motion to pass this resolution?
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Manjerry. Can I get a roll call?
Aye.
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 Aye. I also vote aye.
All right, let's go, let's go get some training. So for, yes, Sarah was gonna give this to you.
Okay. Great. So we have decided to be proactive. And in the past, we have had to reactively work with WebJocker to address various deficiencies in our IT. And we have decided to pursue an IT services contract with WebJocker in order to address those deficiencies, like, in a proactive manner. And it's going to save us money and provide us some great service for this next year. So the resolution reads, "Resolution, awarding IT services contract. Whereas the mayor of the village of Tivoli has solicited a proposal to extend the scope of professional information technology management services provided by WebJocker, the New York corporation, and whereas the village is committed to safeguarding all digital records maintained by the village clerk, deputy clerk, treasurer, planning and zoning secretary, mayor, and building inspector/ zoning enforcement officer, and whereas the village will at least once yearly perform an assessment on cybersecurity settings and policy, as well as require at least one annual cybersecurity training of all employees and officers to be provided by WebJocker in compliance with New York Mutual Insurance, Reciprocal, and NYMER, and village's commercial insurance provider. And whereas the Board of Trustees is determined that entering a contract with WebJocker would be in the best interests of the village, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees." Blah 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 blah. Basically.
Yes.
Shall take place effective immediately. I think that's the most important part.
Yeah, yeah. So in the same way that we have, you know, an official, you know, village attorney and an official engineering company, we now have an official IT service provider. So that's very exciting. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Manjerry, seconded by Shilling. Can I get a roll call?
Aye.
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 Aye. I also vote aye.
And we have sort of an attendant.
Yeah, and so then this next resolution would like officially authorize the agreement for those services.
Right, well, no, this one is, it ups our protection.
Okay.
Right, like, and it, let's see. Yeah, it just, it puts, it puts basically security on deeper end parts of the network.
The first one chooses them as our contractor, and the second one provides the service.
Yes, it's the monthly service, which is an upgraded service.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Resolution, authorizing execution of agreement for professional information technology management services between the village of Tivoli and WebJocker. Whereas the village of Tivoli has received a proposal from WebJocker and New York corporation for professional information technology management services, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the village of Tivoli. The village Board of Trustees hereby approves the form of an agreement for professional information technology management services at an estimated amount of $540 monthly, and substantially the form on file with the village clerk and the mayor. Or in her absence, the deputy mayor. Okay. Is authorized to execute such contract. Blah blah blah. With such changes as shall not materially affect, I feel like this is just verbiage, but yeah. There's surely.
And again, this resolution.
Yep. This resolution shall take effect immediately. So it's basically just, it's $540 a month that again proactively provides us these services that we just spoke about. Like, will provide some of that IT security.
Yes. Yeah, it's, I think the key phrase is active monitor. So that's a good.
Which is less than what we were paying for.
Right.
We were paying this, we were already paying this, but we were paying more for it.
We were at that, by having to react. All right, so can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Manjerry, seconded by a vote. Can I get a roll call, please?
Aye.
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 I also vote aye. Great. All right. Next up, we need to talk about LoSAP, the length of service award program for firefighters.
I will read it.
Excellent.
Authorizing execution and distribution of LoSAP plan documents. Whereas eligible voters of the village of Tivoli approved the proposition to establish a service award program for active volunteer firefighter members of the Tivoli Fire Company Incorporated. Effective January 1st, 2007, as amended by Resolution Number 662023, adopted September 13th, 2023, approved by referendum October 24th, 2023, and effective January 1st, 2024, in accordance with Article 11-A of the New York State Municipal Law. And whereas, under the village of Tivoli Service Award Program, participants are paid a lump sum acute service award after reaching the entitlement age of 65, unless and until the village board subsequently approves by resolution other actuarially equivalent forms permitted by general municipal law, Section 217H. And whereas, updated plan documents for the Tivoli Service Award Program, effective January 1st, 2026, have been provided by Penflex Incorporated and are on file with the village clerk. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of the Village of Tivoli, Dutchess County, New York, as follows. The mayor, or in her absence, the deputy mayor, is hereby authorized and directed on behalf of the village to execute such proposed plan documents, and cause a copy of such executed documents to be provided to Penflex Incorporated to be distributed to plan members.
Excellent. Again, what a great program that is. And a terrific way to, you know, give something to our volunteers.
Yeah, as a way to give back to the people that served in the fire department after a certain number of years and a certain number of
Points per year.
Points per year for attending fires, attending training. They want, they get some money put into an account, which they can get when they retire.
Yep.
Essentially, if we watch over the money until it gets to them.
Yep. And thank you to the town of Red Hook for having up the, upped the benefit.
Yeah.
So, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Oh. All right, I'll make that one vote. Over the second by Manjerry. Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 I also vote aye. Okay. So next we have a resolution. Got a call from Leslie Baker, who does a lot of work with the Red Cross. And she asked if we could let the Red Cross park a vehicle, you know, an official Red Cross vehicle, not a bloodmobile, just a car, in order to, you know, so they can respond to stuff up here in the municipal lot. So we had to go through all the legal stuff. And the fruit of that is this resolution, authorizing execution of an agreement between the village of Tivoli and the American National Red Cross for a revocable and limited license permitting municipal parking lot use. Whereas the village of Tivoli owns Municipal Lot West, located at 101 Broadway, Tivoli, New York. And whereas the American National Red Cross, a nonprofit corporation, a federally chartered instrumentality of the United States and a body corporate and politic under the laws of the United States, requests from the village the right to park its vehicle and conduct emergency disasters with solely related to furthering the corporation's charitable mission. And whereas, the license shall be granted to the Red Cross for the use of one parking space in Municipal Lot West starting on August 21st, 2025, and continuing until August 20th, 2026. And whereas, the village has provided the Red Cross with rules and regulations pertaining to Municipal Lot West in attached Exhibit B, and the Red Cross has agreed to abide by these rules by execution of the agreement. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of the Village of Tivoli. The mayor, or in her absence, the deputy mayor, is hereby authorized and directed on behalf of the village to execute such agreement and to cause a copy of such executed document to be provided to the American National Red Cross. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Valdino.
Second.
Seconded by Manjerry. Nice. Roll call, please. Hit you.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Welcome to Municipal Parking Lot West, Red Cross. Our final resolution is about water authority.
Yes, for the pump. So this village of Tivoli resolution dated August 20th, '25 is authorizing the execution of a license agreement between the village of Tivoli and Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority for a staging area for pump station improvements. Whereas the village of Tivoli owns parcel, excuse me, owns parcel number 134803617518383052, which serves as Municipal Lot West, located at 101 Broadway, Tivoli, New York. And whereas the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, a New York public benefit corporation, and the village have entered into an intermunicipal agreement for the operation, maintenance, and improvement of the village water and sewer systems dated February 27th, 2019, the IMI. And in order to properly construct the proposed improvements to the water and sewer systems, DCWWA desires to perform the following work at the specific locations as further shown in Exhibit A attached to the contract. And whereas, the location will consist of a portion of the municipal lot west limited to a portion of rear grassed area and three parking spaces to be licensed to the DCWWA for the purpose of staging area for the pump station improvements rendered on the parcel, commencing August 18th, 2020-25, and to be completed by December 31st, 2025. Now therefore be it resolved by the village Board, Board of the Village of Tivoli, Dutchess County, New York, as well, the mayor, and in her absence, the deputy mayor, is hereby authorized and directed on behalf of the village to execute such agreement and cause a copy of such executed documents to be provided to DCWWA.
We should probably change the date from the 18th to the 21st. But other than that, I think we're good. Okay, can I get a motion to authorize?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Manjerry, seconded by Shilling. Can I get a roll call, please?
Aye.
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 I was gonna say, I. Yes. And, so this time of the year, we are presented with our, it's now called an AFR in the manager report. It used to be the ABD, maybe because that's short for audit. But here we have it. And what we need to do tonight is, it has been given to us, so we need to accept it. Can I get a motion to accept the AFR?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Valdino, seconded by Shilling. Can we get a roll call?
Aye.
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 Aye. The AFR manager report is accepted. Thank you very much to Michelle Zagorski. No, we're not gonna do the surrender. Okay. The next board meeting will be held Wednesday, September 17th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the historic West of Paister Hall, 86th Avenue, Tivoli, New York. The workshop meetings for the board take place at 6:00 PM on September 10th and September 17th. These are open to the public. So anytime someone wants to come and be part of all this.
All is exciting.
Please do. Yes. We have big time, can't we get things done? So who would like to read the village court report?
That's me.
Okay.
I would love to read it.
Hey.
I don't know how to find it. Okay. So the village of Tivoli Justice Court Report. Oh, I'm sorry. The total money collected and remitted to the state comptroller, $1,030 in fines, $797 in surcharges, 7 in civil fees, for a total of $1,897.
Thank you very much. Do we have a police report?
Yes, we do.
Who do we do?
For the month of July, there was a total of 20 incidents. Three, 13 uniform traffic tickets and one parking ticket, and zero arrests. I'd like to see that number on the bottom, zero.
Yeah. Lovely. Good. Do we have any, so do you want to talk about the garbage survey?
Um, I don't know, what could we say? Well, I think what we want to say is that we have collected, oh, my goodness, how many, it was, it's about, it's almost 70 responses. It's about 70 responses to the survey. So between the paper copies and the digital. So we're gonna close the survey. Thank you to Clerk Cleveland for all your help in receiving those paper copies and just handling people's responses in the office. And so I think I've shared those results with the board, but we're gonna look at the results together. And I know you have worked with the village of Red Hook. And I think our plan is to look at everything, come up with a, like a frequently asked questions sort of guide to our process in, between the forum and our process with working with the village of Red Hook over the summer. And then come up with a plan going forward.
Yeah, we need to, just need to sit down with the mayor of Red Hook and figure out exactly the cost. And then, and then have a good talk.
Yeah. But we, we'll share the data out. I think the, the survey basically shows that, for the most part, the survey mostly, mostly the respondents are people who are using the service and/or people who, if they're not using the service, it's because it's inconvenient to use it for a variety of reasons, and they're explaining why. And it's a lot of the reasons that we've already talked about, either in the forum or at these meetings. But we'll just kind of go through that and some of the ways that we can address that going forward, so that anybody who might be interested in using this service going forward, we could try to address some of the inconveniences, like selling the tickets perhaps through the library or some other places that are a little bit marketing and things like that. That way, we can try to make the program a little more sustainable going forward. And so anyway, we'll, we'll take the feedback and incorporate it going forward. And then, I think the plan is, once we get the numbers from village of Red Hook, we'd like to put it all together. And if it shows that we could make this sustainable going forward, then we will come back with like a report in September and call it a good experiment in civic participation.
I think now that, now that we know that we have the power to do surveys, get ready.
And make it happen.
But I think we're, I think we're happy with, with the results of participating with the village of Red Hook, right, over the summer so far. I mean, there's some refinements to be made, but overall, we're getting.
It's been working well.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're, we've taken the feedback. We will be putting out more information in the mayor's email and some pages on the website and things like that. And we're gonna pull it all together before the September meeting. Get back to folks soon.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything we'd like to bring up? So Tivoli Day was so lovely. I feel like it was, it was kind of a roaring success in the most lovely village kind of way. But I think that the pie contest was incorporated into the day was a, was a good start. But I think that the pie contest was incorporated into the day was a, was a good start in terms of drawing people in. And, you know, the watermelon eating contest was amazing. And, you know, we ended around eight o'clock and meant that the yellow jackets really couldn't set in in earnest with all the stickiness. But yeah, it was great. And thank you to the Masons for having provided, you know, free hot dogs and hamburgers. Thank you to Derek McDonald for loaning his bounce houses. Thank you to Rachel Doris for loaning her.
Karaoke machine?
Her karaoke machine. Trusty Baldino for, for bringing, bringing the cornhole and the bocce.
Who's the bocce? It was, it was a very big hit.
I think we're a bocce kind of place, honestly.
I think we should, you know, build a cool court.
Yeah, and yeah, Trusty Manjerry selling shirts again and just everybody, I feel like.
Keep warm.
Pete Monti for taking the picture, which, you know, there's a, the non-official photo is up on Facebook and the official photo should be ready, you know, anon.
And Nico hosed the, the park down and picked up watermelon chunks that were, were full of bees.
Totally, it feels like the kids really like got involved, you know, and like with the slip and slide and little kids and big kids and. Nobody got hurt? And obviously there's screaming, sack races, of course, I mean, you got to bust out your whistle.
It's great.
Yeah.
It really is.
Not the tight children, there was a win.
Yeah, and thank you to Deputy Mayor Shilling for, you know, negotiating with, with Hannaford.
Thank you to Hannaford.
Thank you to Hannaford.
Sure, donating for your watermelons.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a big deal.
Not a small amount of watermelons, we managed to fill the bucket loader with the watermelons. And to Sam Merritt for, you know, carving the first, the trophy for the first annual watermelon eating contest. And to the Hoot Nanny who.
Yeah, that was fun.
Yeah, and also all of the businesses that donated gift certificates, which we used as prizes. So thank you to Fortunes and the bakery and the club sandwich and to the general and to the hotel and to Osaka and to Gibada and the pub and who am I forgetting? Oh, and available items. So just, it really felt like, you know, thank you to the fire department for coming.
Yeah, and spraying alcohol.
And hosing everybody down, which is, you know, which everybody needed. Everybody probably, we could use more of that. So just thank you to everyone, that was, it was an amazing day. All summer long, we've been having potlucks, which have been a collaboration between the library and the board and the American Legion. And it's been really terrific. The third Friday of each month at six o'clock, we've been gathering either, the last one was at the Legion and the other one upstairs, it was beating hot, we put on the air conditioning. We also did it in the pavilion of the Legion and I would like to propose that we continue this throughout the year. Just the third Friday of the month, just, it becomes a thing where we have, we have the space, right? And we're just providing the opportunity to get together and, you know, what was the, there was a, there were some games, like not card games, it was like dominoes or, kind of like dominoes, but with colors, right? Like colored tiles and, you know, it's just, it's a lot of fun. So we're going to keep that up. So third Friday of each month, six PM, either, either at the Legion or upstairs, wherever, we'll figure it out, like one place or the other. Kind of short notice, on the sixth, which is a Saturday, the sixth of September, three PM, but come early, come to two thirty. We have these, they're called, it's, it's a, it's a, a group, it's an act. It's a, it's a pair of identical twin sisters from Montreal who are going to be performing in the park. And if you came last year to the Free Circus performance, it's sort of along those lines. And this is, it's kind of amazing, they're called the Keef Keef Sisters. And their sort of tagline is theater, puppetry, circus, magic, comedy, all rolled into one. And it just, it looks like a hoot. And they performed at the Vancouver Family Fun Festival and I think it's, it's just going to be a great fun time. So it's two thirty in the afternoon, September, Saturday, September sixth. It's free and it's free.
And they're Canadian, that's nice.
And they're Canadian, yeah, I mean, what could be better, slam dunk. Street Painting Festival this year is September seventh, uh, twenty-seventh, rain date the twenty-eighth. Again, you can sign up online at Facebook, but we'll be putting our, the posters will be appearing soon about that. And, you know, that's always a lovely day, let's keep our fingers crossed for good weather. And I guess the last thing to mention is if you live on Montgomery Street, Spring Street or Farrow, you will have seen surveyors out the last few days and they are, uh, they're, they're laying out, figuring out where exactly the different utilities are. They're marking out for the, for Avenue Drainage Project. So that's what that's all about. And as always, if there's something going on that you're curious about, just, you know, drop an email, later. Please don't overwhelm the clerk, she deals with a lot, right? You can, also you can grab any one of us, we're pretty visible. Do we have any non-agenda items that you'd like to comment on Karen?
I have a couple.
Okay, please.
I don't want to keep you all night. The one, I want to come back to the garbage if you don't mind. And I'm glad that, that many people surveyed, that many surveys came back because people, it's usually a very low number.
Yeah.
I'm wondering, I like what they're doing right now. It seems efficient, very quick and more and more organized where they need to be. But are we finding, I mean, are you paying them on a monthly basis or?
No.
They're doing it for the good kindness of the heart?
No, no, we're just, we're doing it as part of like an intermunicipal trial period.
I don't want to see us go further in debt.
Oh, yeah.
Of the waste program.
Right.
Because we haven't changed anything with tags or whatever, I mean, just.
Well, we, yeah, so we're going to come back with a plan and we're figuring out with the Village of Red Hook what the cost will be. So we won't, we won't go further into debt. We'll, if, if Karen Spie comes to us with a plan that we can't afford, then we will figure out a different plan.
Okay.
I mean, if we need, if we need to raise the cost of the tags, we'll do that, you know, we'll do that. And it seems like, like people, you know.
People tended to be in favor of that.
Right.
As happening.
Right.
Yeah, not everybody. We'll publish the results. Some people definitely want a lower price on the tax. I mean, everybody would love a lower price, of course, but.
They don't.
I, I mean, look, you and I have the same reaction, I think, to that comment, but.
That's okay, they're entitled to their.
That's fine, everybody, that's right, that's why we have a survey.
And so like we've continued to sell garbage tags.
Okay.
While we're doing this.
And we continue to buy them.
Yeah, exactly, so.
That's okay, I just wanted to know.
We can't sell them fast enough, as you heard from the clerk's report. They're like hotcakes. It's a wait for months.
Get them before they go up, right?
Right, exactly.
Like stamps.
My next question is, I know that we haven't had a day designated for picking up.
Oh, yeah.
People's waste other than what we collect. And I didn't know if there was any, anything in the works or plans or is that something, I mean, do we, do we lose money on that? That is not working, that it's beneficial to the village to do that?
Right.
Or is it something that just needs to be worked out and?
We just need to work it out. And the problem in the past has been with just getting companies, because we don't contract, you know, with a hauler, right? It's, we're asking companies to basically do us a favor.
Right.
Come up here and do this thing.
We have to get enough people to sign up.
Yeah.
Ahead of time in order to make it work.
Right, okay, I just wondered if it was in, in the plans or not.
Yeah.
We are looking at it, right?
Yeah.
Because it's a convenient way for people to clean out.
Purge.
Yeah.
I'm definitely in favor of it and I think I'd definitely like to see it happen. So we, we've got it on our to-do list.
My last probably question is, do we, I know we contract better police department to come in the village and I'm assuming that now that school's back, that they may be more present in town.
Yes.
Uh, because you'd probably aware that we've had some problems, issues, not, and I'm not talking about students, but with cars, trucks, speeding motorcycles, there's been a lot of things happening going through, I know past our house. And I think that we're all aware that they probably have an attitude that Tivoli doesn't have a police department, you know?
Right, no, I am in contact with the, with the Red, you know, so we're, we've set patrols for the fall and also, you know, they're, they're aware of our various speeding, parking, parking backwards issues, so, yep.
Okay, because we had that one incident with the truck that was speeding and with the exhaust, the diesel fuel.
Oh, yeah.
The, they have a special name for that when they do that.
Oh, right, isn't it rolling coal?
Coal, whatever, but I mean, he did it, I don't know how many times. And right, I mean, the Santa Fe had all their diners on their porch. I can't imagine, and even Gibada had diners on their porch when that happened, both places. You could not see.
It's, it's a few people and it's happening in Red Hook too, so.
I have, so, but the police responded, so that's good.
Yeah, yeah. I think our coverage has been really quite good.
Otherwise, I mean, I think things are, the garbage just picking up has been great. Community Day was nice, I mean, everything seems to be moving along nicely in the village.
Nice, thank you.
Keep up the good work.
All right, well, this has been a great meeting and I just want to say thank you to everybody. You know, it feels like, feels like a really good team and I appreciate everybody that's showing up for this, so thank you. And sadly, we lost two longtime residents of the village a couple weeks ago, Darrell and Glenn Millis. They, they were great, they were great guys and their presence is, is, you know, their absence is absolutely felt. You know, we don't see them out walking their dogs.
Major Nolly.
Yeah, they're just some good dogs and the dogs are being taken care of, so that's a good thing. But yeah, Darrell and Glenn, rest in peace, fellows. I would like to close the meeting, you know, in honor of them. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
A move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good night. Thank you for coming.